...problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Dean.
I am here.
Alderman Cookson. Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Siegel.
Present.
Alderman Shuneman.
Here.
Alderwoman Melissa Golia.
Present.
Alderman McGinnis.
Here.
Alderman LeBrun.
Present.
Alderman Moriarty.
Present.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here.
Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
We have fourteen members present.
Also present are Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Stephen Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things tonight. The paving plan has gotten underway, and we are going to be doing during calendar year 2017 thirteen miles of streets between paving, micro ceiling and ceiling, micro surfacing and sealing. This is probably double what we've done in previous years, and we're just beginning to embark on the paving plan of action that we adopted earlier in the year, or late last year. As you recall, we devoted thirty-seven point five million dollars to this plan over five years. So I think this year we've made some significant progress, and as we go into the future, we will be able to do even more than this year. One thing on the agenda, Mr. President, that I wanted to mention is the proposal that we enter in memorandum of understanding with the Boston Surface Railroad Corporation. This is a private company, the principal of which is a gentleman by the name of Vincent Bono, and they are proposing that we work together to develop a plan to establish privately-funded, profit-making commuter rail service, beginning in Bedford, near the airport, near the Manchester Airport, stopping in Nashua and going to Lowell. The way this would be accomplished is that if there's municipal involvement, in other words, the city of Nashua, and Woonsocket has also been involved on another possible leg, they can qualify to compete for a loan from the Federal Railway Administration. They need to borrow quite a bit of money, but it would be a relatively low-interest loan to make all the capital improvements required. If they can get those funds and raise some private money, they then would have the funds to make the track improvements, to buy the equipment, and to begin rail service going down in the morning and coming back at night. And it would be several trains to begin with, and then would expand if ridership and demand required it. Now, as far as the city of Nashua goes, we do not need to invest any money in the track improvements. There is no ongoing subsidy required of the city. We do have our park-and-ride, our rail location, and if we adopt that as the stop in Nashua, we would either need to decide whether we'd want to do just a platform, or a station, or whatever, but that would be up to us. So there's really minimal cost and a lot to be gained by the plan. So I assume this will be referred to a committee. Mr. Bono can come to the committee meeting to discuss the details and answer any questions that anyone might have, and I assume there will be some. But again, I think that getting Nashua people off the road, giving them an alternative other than the stop-and-go, you know, grinding, the commute that Ben makes every day down to Cambridge, very rough, this would be a great benefit for Nashua people. On the agenda also, Mr. President, is the resolution that will basically establish the tax rate. We'll assign surplus to reducing the tax rate, as we always do. We project, Mr. Griffin, the CFO, projects that we can reach a 2.9 percent increase. Of course, we've discussed the pension increase, the $2 million increase in our pension bill that was imposed by the state of New Hampshire in this fiscal year. Without that $2 million increase, the tax rate would certainly be less, and the increase in the tax rate would be more in the vicinity of 1.7 as opposed to 2.9. That was, of course, recommended by the Budget Committee. Also on our agenda is a very nice thing that the Gate City Light, excuse me, the mayor's volunteer committee is doing. They are making their annual award of the Gate City Light Award. This is going to go to PAL, Police Athletic League, as the outstanding volunteers of the year in our community. The award, I think, is well-considered, and certainly PAL is well-deserving. They have a major impact on a number of kids in the tree streets and elsewhere, and do a fantastic job for the city, so I think the choice is a very good one. And finally, Mr. President, I wanted to mention the New England Roots Festival, which is the music festival that we have going this coming weekend. If you look at the schedule, and this is being sponsored by GAD and by the River Casino over on High Street, if you look at the schedule, you will see that there are four venues: Main Street, Bicentennial, Railroad Square, and we have a whole number of performers. There are a couple of Grammy-nominated groups or singers that are coming in. They, Paul Shea and Ben Rudick, have done a fantastic job in programming this, and they continue to improve the music offerings in downtown and in Nashua, and I would encourage everyone to come, bring your families. I went with my wife last year. The offerings weren't as extensive as this, but it was really a good time, and I think people really enjoyed the music, and I think you will find the quality of the performers to be very, very high. And that is all I have, Mr. President.
Any responses to the remarks of the mayor? I'd just like to say that my street was ground down last week and has had its base coat of pavement put on it, and I'm happy to see that after living there for nearly forty years. Alderman Dean?
Yeah, if anyone on the board wants to see some of that micro surfacing, you can go down to the South High School, follow Riverside all the way down. It was done rather quickly, and it seems to have bonded real nice, so it's going to be nice to see our roadways paved. Thank you.
Recognition period?
First reading of Resolution seventeen dash one thirty-one, recognizing the Nashua Police Athletic League with the 2017 Gate City Light Award.
Alderwoman Melissa Golia.
Yes, I move that the rules be so far suspended as to allow for the second reading of our seventeen one thirty-one.
Motion is to, that the rules be so far suspended as to allow for the second reading of our seventeen one thirty-one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution seventeen dash one thirty-one, recognizing the Nashua PAL Athletic League with the 2017 Gate City Light Award.
Alderwoman Melissa Golia.
Yes, I would move for final passage of our seventeen one thirty-one.
Motion is for final passage of our seventeen one thirty-one. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and our seventeen one thirty-one is adopted. Alderwoman Melissa Golia and Mayor Donches, would you, and whoever's here from PAL, please...
I believe Mr. Sax...
Mr. Sax.
...is going to be receiving it. Yeah, I'm going to use the mic from here. Resolution our seventeen one thirty-one, recognizing the Nashua Police Athletic League with the 2017 Gate City Light Award. In the year 2017, whereas the mayor's volunteer recognition committee, sponsor of the Gate City Light Award, commends the Nashua Police Athletic League, Nashua PAL, and its volunteers for generously sharing their time in the spirit of community and giving. Whereas Nashua PAL volunteers serve as coaches, mentors, and tutors for more than 2,000 youth annually, volunteers for the organizations work as event coordinators, fundraisers, and community advocates, strengthening the Nashua community through a unique partnership with the Nashua Police Department. Whether volunteering as a community reader or leading youth through community service, each volunteer brings positive energy and enthusiasm to projects that focus on PAL's three core principles of education, activity, and leadership. And whereas more than 1,000 volunteers, after undergoing the required background checks and orientation, support Nashua PAL year-round, encouraging participation in youth football, cheer, street hockey, boxing, educational support, leadership initiatives, and countless community service efforts, the energy of these volunteers is continuous and lasting and is invaluable to the Nashua community. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of Nashua that Nashua PAL and its volunteers be recognized, thanked, and applauded for their vital contribution to the well-being of Nashua and its residents, as well as for their dedication to Nashua PAL youth membership, and be presented with the 2017 Gate City Light Award. Congratulations.
Alderman Wiltshire.
The minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of September 12, 2017, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended.
Motion is that the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of September 12, 2017 be accepted, placed on file, and that the reading be suspended. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And I should have mentioned that Alderman Cookson joined us during the remarks of the Communications. Alderwoman Melissa Golia.
Yes, I move that all communications be read by title only.
Motion is that communications be read by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches, relative to the downtown riverfront development master plan.
Alderwoman Melissa Golia.
Yes, I would move to accept, place on file, and refer to the Planning and Economic Development Committee.
Motion is to accept, place on file, and refer to the Planning and Economic Development Committee. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Fred Teboom?
Good evening. My name is... My name is Fred Teboom. Live on 24 Cheyenne Drive. I'm here to talk about our seventeen one twenty-five. This is a mayor mention during his remarks. Our seventeen one twenty-five recommends $7.1 million be transferred from the city's unassigned fund balance account to offset the tax rate. To put all this in perspective, and this gets into kind of, you know, the insides of accounting, but since I'm suing the city, I'm pretty much up to date on these things. Seven point one, if you look at the tax levy, the tax levy is, in fiscal sixteen, it's the latest numbers available, is $196.1 million. The total amount of money has to be collected from local property taxes, 196.1 million. So 7.1 percent, if you calculate that out, represents 3.6 percent. Every percent is 1.96 million dollars. So 7.1 million dollars represents 3 percent, 6 percent. So instead of putting another 3.6 percent on the citizens of Nashua, you take it out of a reserve account. And that's why government accounting is very arcane and has to be regarded with great suspicion, because a true tax increase, and I see Alderman, comes a smiling, maybe understands all this, if you take the 2.9 percent increase that was mentioned, predicted on the citizens of Nashua, you add the 3.6 percent represented by the 7.1 million dollar offset, the total tax increase, because in taxes, represents 6.5 percent. So obviously, you don't want to tax people 6.5 percent, it'd be an uproar, there'd be recalls, God knows what would happen, so you take money out of the reserve account. However, in context, 7.1 million is a very large number. If you look at the money transferred in past years, it ranged from 4.3 million dollars in fiscal twelve to 5.1 million in fiscal sixteen. The only time it ever approached a number close to this, 7.1, around eight million, during the street administration, when they had this fiasco with the insurance fund. Other than that, transfers from surplus, not surplus, transfers from the, well, fund balance account typically are 45 million. Now, in the resolution before you, it mentions NRO 5135A. I looked it up. Maybe some of you have, maybe you've never heard of it, or never read it. It says that to maintain your undesignated general fund balance to a minimum of 10 percent, that's a requirement of the NRO, a minimum of 10 percent has to remain in the undesignated fund balance, the money you took, take a 7.1 million dollars out of. Plus, and no one ever talks about this, the statewide enhanced education amount, plus the local school net commitment, plus the county appropriations. County appropriations are 12 million dollars. I don't even talk about the other amounts, I'm just talking about the 10 percent. Now, if you look at general budget, you realize, what's the 10 percent? The fiscal 2018 budget has 258.5 million dollars general fund balance, 258.5 million general fund appropriations. But the total appropriations in fiscal 2018 was 301.5 million. 31.5 million. So at least you gotta keep 30 million, 30.1 million in your unassigned fund balance account. That represents 10 percent, maybe more if you take the other things like county taxes, but even, disregard it. The 10 percent means you have to have at least 30.1 million dollars in fund balance account. And guess what? Look up fund balance account. Where do you find a fund balance account? Well, you can do some digging, not easily found. If you look at the budget book, fiscal eighteen, just now adopted, waiting for Mayor Donches' letter in the front to get printed, on page 319, it mentions the fund balance account, the undesignated fund balance account, or unassigned fund balance account, fund balance that has no assigned purpose, like a savings account, a rainy day account, that's what that account is. The CAFR, on page 166, and the budget on page 319, both mention the same number. Guess what's in there? Twenty-eight million dollars. Not approximately 30, as mentioned in the budget, but 28 million is in there. If 28 million dollars is in there, and you take 7.1 million dollars out, you look at 20, what, 23 million dollars? No, 28 less seven, 21 million dollars. Nowhere near 10 percent of anything. So how is this possible? Who's looking at these numbers? Who's representing the city and representing the Alderman in these numbers? And who on this board are checking the numbers? Now, on this board, a number of us, including Alderman Dean, used to check some of these numbers. I'm not sure anybody does anymore. So keep this number in mind, 28 million is in the signed, unassigned fund balance account. CAFR, and in the fiscal eighteen budget, I give you the page numbers. Now, Mayor Donches, look at the minutes of the budget meeting. Where he represents his resolution, the mayor Donches said the budget review committee recommended this resolution. That's all the mayor Donches says, it mentions undesignated and designated reserve account of roughly 30 million. There's no such notation in the ordinance of either undesignated and designated reserve accounts. I don't know where that nomenclature comes from, but no one in the budget committee questioned it. He then says, I mean directly from the minutes, this represents 11.6 percent of the fund balance account, undesignated fund balance account. If you calculate this out, then 100 percent of the budget represent 258.6 million dollars. Let me repeat that point so I'm now very clear. If 7.1 million dollars represents 11.6 percent of the budget, Mayor Donches, then the appropriations represent 258.6 million. That's a familiar number. 258.6 million happens to be the general fund appropriations. But that's not what NRO, the NRO is supposed to meet, 5135A. It doesn't mention general fund, it talks municipal appropriations, 300 million. So those numbers are incorrect. Not 258 million, 301 million, which is supposed to go by. Then I looked in the back of the budget minutes to see if there's any tabular presentation how this whole thing worked out. If you've got 28 million dollars in fund balance, you take 7 million dollars out, you left with 23, how can it be possibly down to be 10 percent of 300 million dollars? You look for the presentation, and it isn't there. Go look at your, look at your budget minutes for 20 April, 20 September. No presentation. Nobody asked. There's a question about overlay, that was misrepresented, but that's what I'm addressing at this point. No details presented, wrong information about what NRO 5135 represents, false information about the percentages in the budget appropriations accounted for. It takes ten members of this board to adopt, ten members of this board, no matter how many are sitting, it takes ten members of this board to adopt this resolution. I recommend you either turn it down or reduce it well below 5 million and try to find savings in the budget. Now, there's a time to pay the piper. We gotta lawsuit against the city. The city overowed the spending cap by 8.2 million dollars. To cover this up, because someone's gonna pay the piper, to cover this up, you come up with this phony resolution with false numbers. La risenta. Thank you.
Mr. Teboom's presentation is not correct. What he misses is the 9.6 million dollars of surplus that we generated. So we started the year with 29 million, 521,000, 501 dollars in the unassigned fund balance account. That's as of June 30, 2016. During the course of the year, we generated 9,639,927 dollars of surplus. And that included escrows that had been carried over from the previous year in the amount of 991,499 dollars. So we reassigned those escrows, we continued to carry them forward, and last week, you passed the escrow allocations. Escrows are from unappropriated revenues of 1,548,428 dollars, leaving a figure of 7, 100,000 dollars, which is being assigned to the tax rate. Now, the 9,600,000 dollars, 639,000 dollars of surplus was generated in the following manner. First of all, we exceeded the budget on revenues by 5,600,000 dollars, and we had unexpended appropriations, including the escrows that had been carried forward from the previous year, in the amount of 4,39,927 dollars. So at the end of all this, if we apply the 7.1 million to the tax rate, as is proposed, and this was discussed in detail with the budget committee, and there was a memo with these numbers presented to the budget committee, if we apply this to the tax rate, we will have, at the end of the year, as of June 30, now 2017, we will have an adjusted fund balance of 29,921,501 dollars. And we are increasing that fund balance from last year by 400,000 dollars. So it's gonna climb from 29,521,501 dollars to 29,921,501 dollars. Now, the base that is used to calculate the minimum unassigned fund balance that is required is the same that we've been using for the last 20 years. Since the cap was passed more than 20 years, and that has always been the total general fund appropriations, the same as last year, the same as Mayor Lozo's administration, the same as Mayor Streeter, and on and on. So if we use the same approach we've been using for the last 25 years, or 24 or 23 years, we use the 258 million dollars, therefore, the 29, as the base, the ordinance says that 10 percent of that number of the fund appropriation needs to be in the reserve. If we use that figure against the now-increased unassigned fund balance of 29,921,501 dollars, using the same approach we have for the last more than 20 years, we come up with an 11.6 percent unassigned fund balance as compared with the municipal budget. These are the actual figures down to the dollar. We've increased the reserve by 400,000 dollars. We have not drawn down 7 million dollars. That is completely wrong. And we are, in fact, doing the reverse and increasing the fund balance by 400,000 dollars. If you want to see the numbers, they're right here. We gave the numbers to the budget committee. This is prepared by the CFO. Anyone who wants to see it right now, they can. All of the details are right here, and I just read most of it to you. So, you know, I think there's a misunderstanding about how the system works. Mr. Teboom, although I think he put his, you know, good faith effort into this, missed the fact that we have a 9.6 million dollar surplus, and that gets added to all of the money that's in the city, and I think that's where the air occurred. Thank you, Mr. President.
Lieutenant Brian Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board, for allowing me to speak here tonight. I won't take up too much of your time. My name is Brian Kenny. I'm a detective lieutenant at the police department in the narcotics division, and I just, on behalf of the police department, I... And I just, on behalf of the Police Department, I was asked to come here tonight just to touch base and to relay a little bit of our feelings on one of the topics you are all going to discuss tonight, as my understanding goes, and that's the, the state funding under the Granite Hammer grant that we're scheduled to receive yet again this year. As most of you know, we received a grant last year under the Granite Hammer program, where we were able to specifically target the opioid crisis to include heroin, fentanyl, oxycodone, all kinds of, all the opiates that are affecting our community. We believe we were very successful last year. We, we ran Granite Hammer operations from November of two thousand and sixteen up until the beginning of June two thousand and seventeen. Throughout that time, we had more than two hundred, two hundred and eight arrests directly related to those specific patrols, not including our normal duties. Fifty, excuse me, eighty-four percent of those were felonious arrests, meaning possession of felonious substances, specifically opioids, and sales of those substances. Those were all related to the county attorney's office. One thing we learned, which I think is of the utmost importance, one thing we learned once we got a few months in, is that there was a difference being made, and there was a feeling on the street that this was happening. And we didn't necessarily anticipate that, but through talking to people, through talking to arrestees, just people that would call us to give tips or information, things like that, people that typically assisted us in investigations are still willing to do so, but the story had changed. It was, hey, listen, I have this information, or I would like to help, or, or even a defendant saying, hey, I would like consideration for my charges, but we got to go to Lawrence. I don't even know where to get it in Nashua anymore. And we were hearing that time and time and time again, which, from my standpoint, was, was positive, and we viewed that as an excess to some, to some extent, because we were taking it back to the source city. Nashua, as most of you know, is not necessarily what we would call a source city. Are we affected by the opioid crisis? Of course we are. We're affected greatly by it. But we were now starting to take things away from this city. We were being told that larger scale dealers weren't showing up anymore. They were dictating the terms of these sales, and they were dictating to New Hampshire residents, you have to come down to Lawrence. We won't deal with you in Nashua. You bring up the word Nashua on the phone, and the phone gets hung up. So, these are some of the things we were dealing with. Once, once we started to see some of that, we started looking at overdose numbers, which is kind of the whole reason why we, what this grant is, is supposed to target. We want our overdose numbers to come down. From, from November to June, November sixteen to June seventeen, we had a hundred and fifty-one suspected opioid overdoses. We looked up during that same timeframe the previous year, when we were, we were bare, bare bones forty hours a week enforcement, as usual, and we were over two hundred, which is a decrease in twenty-five percent for just the period where we ran Granite Hammer One of the other things we started doing is, once we started learning, hey, listen, there's, there's low level stuff here, and, and that surely needs attention, and we'll give it attention, but if we're going to take things to Massachusetts, we need to relay some of this information to them. And we started doing that, maybe a little bit more than we used to. Specifically, information we gained, we referred to task forces, and as, as a lot of you know, we have Nashua detectives attached to some of these task forces. One case in particular, that one of our officers took to Lawrence, resulted in almost a million dollars in cash, seven hundred and fifty grams of fentanyl, twenty-one grams of heroin, fifteen kilos of marijuana, and a firearm found in one apartment in Lawrence. And that, that would be the goal again this year, is not just to do what we did last year, but to change it a little bit, you know, keep, keep evolving as the drug, the drug world evolves, and if we need to take our information that we learn up here through our enforcement and bring it to a source city, we'd like to do that. One of the things I'd, I would urge the Board to do is, when the matter is discussed tonight, is, is to grant us the, grant us the, the power to start this initiative as soon as possible. As you know, Nashua has been awarded more money this year, and we would like to start immediately. One of the things we've seen, we stopped, unfortunately, the, the grant money ran out in June. So we've been doing our normal work, as, as we typically would, and all of a sudden, slowly but surely, it's not, we're not back to where we were when we started, but slowly but surely, our investigations into some of these opioid substances are starting to pick back up. And we're, we're running into people that can find it in Nashua, not in the amounts that maybe we saw before last year, or even years ago, but it's, it's picking back up. What we don't want to see from the Police Department is to lose the little bit of a foothold that we did gain, when we know that the ability to use the money is there. And we would just like not to, not to drag our feet or wait a month or two, and we'd like to start immediately. And if, if the Board would be willing to help us with that, we'd be greatly appreciative. And that's it. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions, should anyone have any. Thank you.
Petitions?
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
There are none.
Reports of committees? If there are no objections, the report of the Budget Review Committee of September twentieth, two thousand and seventeen will be accepted and placed on file.
Mr. President.
Alderman Cookson?
As I'm reviewing the Budget Review Committee meeting minutes from the twentieth of September, there is reference to a communication by Mayor Donches regarding the report on surplus and overlay, but there is no mention of a communication with regard to what he just spoke about. Was it part of the, the meeting, and should it not be included with the minutes?
Is that included in the communication that's referenced?
Well, when we went to the Budget Committee, on the reverse side of the memo is this, which shows the overlay, which shows the projected sur, or the use of the tax rate, the reserves and all that. Now, I, I just made a more complete presentation, but this went to the, this, this tabulation went to the committee on the backside of the memo.
So the, the minutes that are-
We'll make sure that a copy of that gets attached to the minutes.
Sure, because the minutes that are there don't have any attachment at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there are no objections, I will declare the report of the Finance Committee of September twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, I will declare the report of the Human Affairs Committee of September eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen, accepted and placed on file. And if there are no objections, I will declare the report of the Planning and Economic Development Committee of September nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, accepted and placed on file. Written reports from liaisons?
There are none.
Confirmation of the Mayor's appointments?
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of Resolution seventeen dash one two five, establishing the use of fund balance for tax rate.
Alderman Dowd?
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R seventeen one twenty-five by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R seventeen one twenty-five by roll call. Alderman Moriarty?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be happy to grant the Mayor the position, the motivation of the process that you followed to calculate this, was the same process that's been happening in the past, that's fine. But I do have a question on, on the specifics. In the resolution, it talks about that the remaining twenty-nine point nine million is eleven point six, exceeds the ten percent. The question is, ten percent of what? So in the five one thirty-five A, it says that, it says that the general, the unassigned general fund balance equal to a minimum of ten percent of the municipality's fiscal year appropriations, but there are two subsequent clauses that say, plus the statewide enhanced education amount, the local school net tax commitment, and the county appropriation. So what is the value of the statewide enhanced education amount, local school net tax, and county appropriations? The reason I ask that is because the, if you use municipa, ten percent of the municipality's fiscal year appropriations, if you use the general fund as that number, that's the two hundred and fifty-eight million we're talking about, and eleven point six percent of that gives you the twenty-nine million. So that says that you've exceeded the ten percent of just the first portion, but there's three other portions that you have to have ten percent of.
Well, we can, may I answer that? Is that a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we can have legal look at that. I mean, I'm not looking at the language right now. All I know, what I do know is that we have followed the same procedure we have for the last twenty years in calculating this number, so that if this year's number is wrong, then it's been wrong for the last twenty years. And these are audited financials. This isn't just me and John Griffin, the CFO, making these numbers up. I mean, these are audited financials. We have a, we have a thorough audit every year. So the idea that we've made up numbers, or taken seven million that we didn't account for, you know, this is audited down to the, to the dollar. So, I'd be glad to have someone look at that law and see if somehow we've been doing it wrong for the last twenty years, but I think, at this point, since we need to close the books, we should act on this, and if some different procedure you, needs, if the whole thing, if the whole way we've been doing things for twenty-some years needs to be changed or reevaluated, that we do that in the coming year.
Alderman Moriarty?
Thank you. So, I don't expect you to know the numbers off the top of your head, but nevertheless, I'll read this clearly. Five one thirty-five A is the policy of the Board of Alderman to maintain an unassigned general fund balance as of each June thirtieth equal to a minimum of ten percent of the municipality's fiscal year appropriations, plus the statewide enhanced education amount, the local school net tax commitment, and the county appropriation. That's English. That's not French. It's not German. It's not, it's not accountantese, it's not legalese, it's English. So there are four things that are easy to read in there. The numbers should exist somewhere. Hopefully, they exist somewhere, and hopefully you can, somebody's willing to provide them at some reasonable time.
The first two of those that you read, Alderman Moriarty, refer to the totality of the school budget that's in the general fund budget. That's what is provided by us to the school district and what the state provides, which in total are the appropriations for the school department.
Okay, so we have three more.
Alderman Dean, did you-
Oh, that's correct.
Alderman Dean?
It, we mentioned earlier about the issue we had with the health insurance back a number of years. I'm of the understanding that our health insurance, just our working rates alone, was underfunded by nearly four million dollars previously, that we had to make up the difference on. Is that correct?
Now, you will recall that this year, we increased health, the health budget, and that was one of the problems we had with, with the budget, that we increased the appropriation to health insurance by three point six million, because, so that would be for fiscal eighteen, the current year, because we found that the working rates that were, had been estimated for fiscal seventeen, and to some degree fiscal sixteen, were not, were not adequate to meet the obligations. Now, as you know, we have a, a reserve account, and the, in fiscal seventeen and sixteen, the city, because we did not, because we, because the amount of health insurance that we'd have to pay out was underestimated, we did draw down on the reserve. We now have about ten million dollars left in the, we have ten million dollars in the reserve. We didn't want, you know, we didn't want to draw down on that if, any further, if we could avoid it, so that's why the health, this year's health insurance appropriation went up three point six million dollars, so that we would not hopefully touch the reserve any further.
So, prior to you coming into office, how often and how much were those reserves drawn down on every fiscal year?
Um, you know, as the, not, not that much. I mean, I forget, I think at one point, the reserve was sixteen million, now it's ten. The underestimate for seventeen was significant, so that's why we had to increase the, the budget in eighteen by, fiscal eighteen by three point six million dollars. I mean, it's, remember that these are not, these are all estimates. So, it's not like we're self-insured, so this is not like you get a bill from an insurance company and you know exactly, you know, a, an insurance company that insures the employees, and so you know exactly what your bill is. These are estimates that are arrived at with the personnel, with a consultant that the city has, and they estimate going forward, what do you think all of the, what are, what are our bills going to be for the coming year? And those estimates can be wrong, because they're estimating healthcare use by a group of thousands of employees. So it's not like they're doing anything intentionally, they're trying to come up with the best estimate they can, they're trying to be reasonable, they don't want to over-appropriate, but because we were under, the estimates were low, two years running, one, you know, seventeen more than sixteen, we increased the appropriation by three point six million dollars. Now, you know, in terms of the cap, that basically equaled the whole cap, you know, if, if it had been, you know, that, that could have equaled the whole cap. So it, it, you know, is a lot of money, and, but rather, but it just didn't seem responsible to continue to draw, draw down on the reserve.
Can I continue? Thank you. So the, the amounts that were given to you by those who looked at working rates and what our, some total estimate was going to be, were those followed? I mean, you, have you followed what they've-
Yeah.
And were they, I wonder if they were followed previously? I mean, because you end up having a problem that escalates.
They were.
And instead of budgeting, you draw out of reserves to make up the difference, so that you can maintain these, you know, two point one percent tax rate increases, and a small reduction on fund balance to cover the cost. But down the road, somebody's got to be responsible and say, you know what, we can't continue to fund this, underfund this area and rely strictly on reserves and have the reserves dwindle, so if you do run into a catastrophic issue and you have no reserves, you've got a big problem. So, I think if you look back and you look at the seven point one million, yeah, it's a big number, but if you take the three point six out of it, that we had to fund in excess of what had been previously funded to cover the cost, that answers a lot of questions right there, to me anyway. So, I remember that ordinance well, because I, I brought that ordinance in, or it existed, and I brought in the increase of percentage, and I think my, my buddy and my colleague over here, Alderman Clemmons, was the only one to vote against it.
I was. I was.
It was a long time ago, but, you know, I think, I think the Mayor's done a, a great job with all of this, and, you know, you can, you can, you can only fool yourself by continuing to, you know, fund out of reserves. I mean, I'm a strong supporter of unassigned fund balance, and I know there's a lot of people in this room that hate bonding, they don't think it's any good. I don't really have a problem with making those down the road pay for a little bit. Why should we use all today's cash? But, you know, our unassigned fund balance and, and the way we've operated has returned dividends on the interest rates that we pay when we sell our notes. So having that kind of money sitting in the bank, and having that fiscal responsibility that this Board has and the Mayor has, has paid dividends. It saves us millions of dollars in interest that we're paying, and we're getting projects, a lot of projects done. So, thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Schoneman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the research that Mr. Teboom did and Mayor's answer. I think it, it makes sense, both make sense. I understand where some of the shortfall of information may have been that Mr. Teboom had. A question, though, that I have going forward, I understand this is how we've done it before, but Mayor suggested that we have legal take a look at it. I hope that we can do that, just to make sure that we are in compliance with whatever the rule says. I, I support this, but going forward, if that could be done, I think that would be valuable to the city. Thank you.
Further discussion? Motion was for final passage by roll call. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Dean.
Yes.
Alderman Cookson.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Siegel.
Yes.
Alderman Schoneman.
Yes.
Alderman Milizigola.
Yes.
Alderman McGinnis.
Yes.
Alderman LeBrun.
Yes.
Alderman Moriarty.
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
We have fifteen yeses.
Motion carries, and R seventeen one twenty-five is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution seventeen dash one two six, establishing, establishing an inexplicable trust fund to accept donations for the Arlington Street Community Center.
Alderman Lopez?
I'd like to make a motion for final passage.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution R seventeen one twenty-six. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R seventeen one twenty-six is adopted.
Second reading, Resolution seventeen dash- Second reading of Resolution 17-127 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $500,000 of unanticipated revenue to the Hydropower Reserve Fund for the purpose of repairing the turbine at the Jackson Mills Dam.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R. 17-127 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R. 17-127 by roll call. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Dean.
Yes.
Alderman Cookson.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Siegel.
Yes.
Alderman Schoneman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malizigola.
Yes.
Alderman McGinnis.
Yes.
Alderman LeBrun.
Yes.
Alderman Moriarty.
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
We have 15 yeas.
Motion carries, and R. 17-127 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 17-129 for the city to research the feasibility of purchasing the former Daniel Webster College property located at 20 University Drive.
Alderman Cookson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll move to table Resolution 17-129 pending the recommendation from the Nashua City Planning Board, please.
Motion is to table R. 17-129 pending the recommendation from the Nashua City Planning Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of Ordinance 17-044, revisions to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Thank you. I move to amend Ordinance 1744 in its entirety by replacing it with the blue copy on your desk, and I'll speak to that amendment.
Motion is to amend O. 17-44 in its entirety by replacing it with the blue copy provided with the agenda. Alderman Wiltshire.
Thank you. In committee, it was brought up by one of the members of the composition of the committee. Originally, it had listed that the low-income resident be of the community, and one of the members, Alderman LeBrun, suggested that we have the low-income member of the Review and Comment Commission be a resident of the city of Nashua as defined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. That's the amendment to this.
Further discussion of the motion to amend? Alderman Clemmons.
What, what, what exactly does that mean?
Alderman Wiltshire.
You mean the definition by HUD?
Does that mean the, the income level, or does that mean that that person has to be living in a, in a HUD development?
No, the person does not have to be living in a HUD development. That was one of the concerns that was brought up at the committee, that the person just be a low-income resident of the city of Nashua.
So the, so this refers to the income level of the individual as defined by the?
And not the neighborhood they live in. Yes.
Okay.
Alderman Lopez.
I was just going to clarify, in addition to what Alderman Wiltshire was saying about the person, the way it was originally written is the person could be there in, living in a low-income neighborhood, a person could be of, a person who had a low income, or could even be working for an agency that represented low income, and through discussion, we felt like it made more sense to actually have a person of low income represent the people who have low income. And Alderman LeBrun wanted to confirm that in describing this person, we were making sure we were talking about a Nashua city resident.
Alderman O'Brien, did you have something?
Thank you. I think I see the intention here, but I'm very concerned of the labeling that could go on with this. It's not just a citizen that we're putting on. We are clearly identified that this citizen has to be a low-income resident, and I am just concerned that there's no attached stigma to any of that. I think if we had probably, if that is the objective to do it, fine, but to clearly identify that person, oh, you're on the board because you're a low-income resident. I, I don't know if that's clear.
Alderman Moriarty.
I'm going to back up Alderman O'Brien's statement from yet a different perspective. I just like, I have, I have an issue with this similarly. The original statement said the three commissioners shall be Nashua residents representing a cross-section of the community. That should be sufficient. Why don't we add a special commissioner for seniors? Or why don't we add a special commissioner for a minority group? Or why don't we add a special commissioner to represent Republicans, or a special commissioner to represent Democrats, or special representative, I mean, you could, you could itemize an endless list of people that you could come up with a commissioner to represent. Why are we singling out and identifying a commissioner that shall always be low-income? Why not just let the board president and the mayor choose to select that person because the mayor sees that a low-income person is a representative of the cross-section of the community? Why is this even necessary?
Alderman Wiltshire.
It doesn't have to be. You could make that amendment if you'd like. Alderman Moriarty? I almost forgot your name.
Fit a while.
Is there any, any time sensitivity to this legislation?
Well, there is. Yeah, there is. We were hoping to get the members appointed before the process began.
Which is when?
Well, the, the composition of this commission is, is changing from the five commissioners and up to 30 volunteers to a seven-member commission, and appointing those people and getting this process up and running is, it's sort of time-sensitive. It has to fall in line with the whole budget, it has to be done over a certain number of months, so we were hoping to get it passed at this meeting. We can change that if, if that's the board's preference.
Alderman Cookson.
Thank you, and, and I appreciate Alderman Wiltshire going into that brief explanation, because I, what I was going to ask was, my, my recollection was that this was the Review and Comment Commission that has gone through a name change and now become the Citizen Advisory Commission for Community Grants, and, and what Alderman Wiltshire just said was that we've lost that community aspect to this per se, because what it used to be was 30 members of the community coming together, reviewing grants, distributing the workload, and now we're going to ask seven individuals to move forward, and I'm assuming that you would probably have the same number of applicants and, or, or maybe even more applicants, depending on how popular this is, but your, the, the workload would now be among seven individuals versus 37 per se.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Well, I, I think the, the seven-member commission is in standing with what we typically do in the city, and I think when you had five commissioners, they were broken up into five groups, not all looking at the same applications, or not looking at the applications as a whole. I feel that the commissioners that we had were spending probably half their time recruiting volunteers, because it was a process every year to get the number of requisite volunteers on this commission. They were kind of working in silos. You know, you take these five, I'll take this five, you take that five. Nobody was looking at the overall picture of it, and I think that's a disservice to, to the process.
Alderman Dean.
Meanwhile, back at the amendment, it's, from listening to what my colleagues have to say, if Alderman Moriarty doesn't want to make the amendment, I think we should just put under B. 1, the composition, the Citizen Advisory Commission for Community Grants shall consist of seven members, comma, and the rest of it should be removed.
Is that a?
That's in the form of a motion.
Is there a motion to amend the amendment?
Yes.
Does everybody understand the motion? Alderman Wiltshire.
Yeah, I guess my question would be that you would look to get rid of the four members appointed by the mayor, the two members appointed by the board president?
No. That would remain.
No? That would remain.
That shows the composition of seven.
Well, this only.
And then there's, and then down in D, that should be removed as well.
So where do we, oh, sorry.
Hold the room a moment.
Where would you add the seventh member? To the mayor appointee, or to the board president appointees?
No, it's there. No, four, two, and one only, that only, that gives you seven right there, right?
Mm-hmm. So you're willing to keep the third, the section D?
Yeah, just A, B, and C. Get rid of D altogether, along with the, that sentence after the comma.
Everybody understand the amendment?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. We're back to applying the amended blue copy to replace the original ordinance. Is there any further discussion of that motion? Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, so I think it is important, actually, to have a low-income person, as uncomfortable as it may be to label them as such. Low-income people do represent a cross-section of Nashua. There are elderly people, there are minorities, I think we can represent a lot of people, but it's particularly important, in my opinion, for someone of low income to represent that particular interest in what Review and Comment does.
Alderman Dean.
I am quite confident that both the mayor and the board president can appoint a low-income person without.
Alderman Lopez.
I finished my comment as a, making an observation.
Alderman Lopez.
So I think it's important for us to acknowledge, A, that there are low-income people in Nashua, and B, before deciding not to use that definition as HUD defines it, to understand what it is, because HUD's low-income definition is 40% of the median income. So if the median income in Nashua is $60,000 a year, then we're basically saying that anybody who's $40,000 or less doesn't particularly have a special voice. That's what low-income is, and I think it's important for us to make sure that those people are specifically identified.
We're getting, we're getting a feel to the amendment. We just, the board just voted 14 to 1 to take that language out. That question should have been decided at the committee if there was, was.
It was. We did discuss it at the committee.
So Alderman Moriarty.
Hey, Mr. President. I'm particularly interested in this. I like it. It makes me happy in the sense that, that, to see this move forward, because I was on the Human Affairs Committee, it might have been five years ago when we worked together, and I think I might have been instrumental in, in writing some of the shawls in the first place. And so I, but, aside, and putting aside, putting aside the anecdotes, the fact that there was some stress, I remember, associated with that committee at the time, and it's nice to see that that stress seems to have abated, and now we're able to go to iteration two and relatively stress-free. I like that.
Motion is to amend with the blue copy. Is there further discussion of that amendment? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Wiltshire.
I move for final passage of Ordinance 17-044 as amended.
Motion is for final passage as amended. Alderman Dean, did you want to address that?
No, I just, my, my comment has to do with the fact, Alderman Lopez, is, I think it's disingenuous to sit there and say that we don't recognize or support low-income people in this community. This book here is filled with appropriations that help out many, many low-income people in the community. I mean, we, we spend a lot of time, a lot of effort, and we contribute quite a bit of an appropriation to help people, between our welfare, between this program here, between our, our other appropriations throughout our operating budget. We, we do quite a bit in this community. I, I just, you know, I'm, I'm a little taken aback by that. I, I think I've always supported, you know, when Review and Comment came down, we never, I never looked at altering anything, any of the work they did, because I always respected what they did. I mean, they sat up there for months doing all of that work, so, I mean, we gave them a figure to work with, they worked with it, and the entities came in, and we approved the appropriations that were sent down, but I think we do a substantial amount of work for everybody in our community.
Motion is for final passage of?
President McCarthy?
Yep. Of R. 17-129, or, nope, O. 17-44 as amended. Alderman Lopez.
I'd just like to point out that as much as we have done a lot for the people of Nashua, there still are people in Nashua in need, and we just made a decision to remove specific language protecting their right to be heard on this committee without actually finding out what the definition of low-income was. So that was why I made the comment afterwards, because I was confirming what it was. So I'm not necessarily disparaging all of the work that other Aldermen have done over the years, I'm just pointing out that there should have been a voice, in my opinion, on this committee specifically for people in need, people who are making $40,000 or less.
Alderman Siegel.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm sensitive to my colleague Alderman Lopez's concerns, but I don't think anything in the amended legislation precludes that. I think the good sense of the board president and the mayor going forward, will, will, they will appoint people to, to consider that.
Alderman Lopez, I would appreciate it if you would find for me the name of someone who fits that category that you believe would be a proper appointee to the committee.
I would be happy to do so.
Further discussion on the motion for final passage? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and O. 17-44 is adopted as amended. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution 17-132 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $78,273 from the Department of Homeland Security into fire grant activity FY 2016, assistance to firefighters grant.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Karen, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Moriarty, and anybody else, Alderman Siegel, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dean. Did I miss anybody? R. 17, Alderman LeBrun. R. 17-132 will be assigned to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution 17-133, authorizing the city to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Boston Surface Railroad Company, Inc.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Wiltshire, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Malizigola, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, and myself. And R. 17-133 will be assigned to the Planning and Economic Development Committee.
First reading of Resolution 17-134, authorizing the sale of land on the east side of Medical Center Drive, Sheet 31, Lot 12, to Southern New Hampshire Medical Center for $300,000, establishing an expendable trust fund for downtown redevelopment initiatives in appropriating the $300,000 of proceeds into the expendable trust fund.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Wiltshire, Alderman O'Brien. R. 17-134 will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure, the Budget Review Committee, and the Nashua City Planning Board.
First reading of Resolution 17-135 relative to the approval of the downtown riverfront master plan adopted by the city planning board.
Additional sponsors, R. 17-135 will be assigned to the Planning and Economic Development Committee.
First reading of Resolution 17-136, authorizing the city to enter into a short-term real property lease agreement for 44 Broad Street.
Additional sponsors, R. 17-136 will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure. Alderman Wiltshire.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules be so far suspended as to allow for the first reading of Resolution 17-137.
Motion is to allow, to, that the rules be so far suspended as to allow for the first reading of R. 17-137. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
First reading of Resolution 17-137 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $261,767 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Safety into police grant activity FY 2018, opioid abuse reduction initiative, O.A.R.I.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Cookson, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Dean, Alderman Siegel, Alderwoman Malizigola, Alderman Schoneman, Alderman LeBrun, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, and myself. Alderman Wiltshire, you have a motion?
I do. I move for final passage of Resolution 17-137.
We need to suspend the rules for second reading.
Oh, sorry, you're right. Got ahead of myself. I move to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading of Resolution 17-137.
Motion is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading of R. 17-137. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Wiltshire.
Now I'll move for final passage of Resolution 17-137.
Motion is for final passage of R. 17- Motion is for final passage of R seventeen one thirty-seven. Alderman Dean?
I wanted to thank the officer who came in. Go get him.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R seventeen one thirty-seven is adopted. New business ordinances?
First reading of ordinance seventeen dash zero four five, moving parking enforcement to the Office of Economic Development in the mayor's office.
Additional sponsors: Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Wilshire, Alderman Melizzi Golia, Alderman Lopez. And our oh seventeen forty-five will be assigned to Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for general public comment. No one additionally had signed up. Remarks by members of the board? I'll start over here. Come on forward, Mr. Daley.
Jeff Daley, seventy-four Walden Pond Drive. Coming back to your blue copy, the wording, I agree with Alderman Moriarty. You leave a lot of people out, but I think if you add in representing a full and diverse cross-section would cover everything, and then leave it to the mayor and the president here to set it in place. Mayor, I had a long conversation with the surface railroad people today. I think this city should work with them very, very closely. We've got the piece of property down on Crown Street that would be ideal as a parking lot and a train station. They've got long-term plans, and one of them actually is looking at now is going from here out to Milford to Bennington. There are over a thousand vehicles a day traveling in and out of Milford, of which we would probably get twenty-five to thirty percent off the road if the pricing is right. That gets our greenhouse gases here in Nashua down below the national level. The next thing we've got to do is get the people off the highways on the weekend going north. But I hate to say it, our ex-governor Sununu does not want his Peter Pan buses disturbed. And that is something that this city needs to be aware of. It may be coming out of his pocket, but he's got plenty of other bus routes that he could provide service to. The other thing is, where are we? Burke Street. What's happening with the Department of Public Works not moving there? And now I'm hearing all sorts of numbers of renovation in the millions, tens of millions of dollars. Please do not use our favorite engineering and construction people. This city has lost a lot of money to these people, and they've got rich. There's no accountability. I've just finished a job down in New Jersey, and the state attorney general's office is looking into overpricing and corruption. Myself and three other people reported it. We've got to look after what we're doing here. That building, and I know it because it's the old Beloit facility, has got floors that are eight feet thick, ten feet wide, fifty-two feet long, where they had the big turning mills. And they want to take jackhammers and cut that out so they can put in a drain. That's going to cost a fortune. There is new technology that the engineering department of this city has got to be looking at. One of them I have already told numerous times is using dry ice to remove graffiti from all the various walls that have been marked up by the kids. It can be done in about five seconds, and the DPW can do it themselves. You don't have to get a contractor in to do it. You don't have to have a hazmat company come in and clean all the grit off the floor. We've got to start looking at modern technology, ladies and gentlemen. Same thing with lawnmower cutting. There is technology coming over from Europe, and, I hate to say it, nobody in the DPW wants to look at it. Oh, well, we've done it that way for years. You've got a major problem down at Four Hills Landfill. You've got two wells measuring, PFOAs and PFOSs in. They are going into the main wastewater plant of the city. Why isn't it being cleaned up? Why is it not being filtered? Oh, we don't have the technology. Yes, we do. Nobody asks. Nobody goes out and looks. The city owns Penney Chuck Water. You go out on Route one oh one, just beyond PC Connections, there is a turning that goes across the railroad crossing. There are three wells down there when they first started testing that registered seven to ten parts per trillion. One of those wells is now up to fifty-four parts per trillion, ladies and gentlemen, and it's within nine feet of the Penney Chuck Brook. The Penney Chuck Water Works do not check the water quality for PFOA and PFOS. It's about time we did, because we're going to be poisoning a hundred and eighty-eight thousand people that the Penney Chuck Water Company will be eventually supplying water to in Amherst, Bedford, Merrimack, Litchfield, and part of Manchester. Does the city want the liability of having a filtration system that doesn't work in a facility that we purchased and will be paying off for years? It is a very serious situation. Myself and one other person is working right now with the United States Air Force down at Pease Air Force Base. They've known about this for seven years. We've got to do a study. We've got to do a study. We did a test run at Camp Lejeune and out at Husick Falls on a particular filtration system. We went from seventeen thousand parts per trillion out in Husick Falls down to zero-point-zero-six-eight parts per trillion. Those results were obtained out of Sandier Labs where we sent the samples. That's the only place in the United States that can go below one part per trillion. But the contamination that we've got out on Route one oh one needs to be addressed, and this chamber needs to look at it. And we also need to look at the Merrimack River, because we're taking water in from there below the Sanger Bayne facility. And those measurements up there in the Merrimack area are about eleven to twelve parts per trillion. The originals were five to six parts per trillion. And it's bioaccumulative, and the lifetime exposure is seventy parts per trillion. Do the math. If you've got five parts per trillion in your drinking water, you'll probably get about four parts of that excreted out. Then you have another glass. You've still got a little bit left in you, and so it becomes bioaccumulative, and it adds up. In Husick Falls, it's going to take fifteen years for those residents to meet the seventy parts per trillion. And Merrimack has just had the death of one person who had thyroid cancer attributed to the exposure of PFOA and PFOS. I want you all to take this very, very seriously. A woman who gets pregnant and has never been exposed to it and is now drinking, her child gets exposed to it. So immediately that child is born, they're going to suffer. So please, think about it, and the wording that I said in the amendment that you've just passed, I would add fully and diverse, a full and diverse cross-section of the community. There's no stigma added anywhere in those words. Doesn't matter if you're disabled, you've got one leg, or, as Alderman Moriarty pointed out, you know, several other words he used. Thank you very much.
Remarks by members of the board? Start over here. Alderman Lopez?
I just wanted to remind anybody who's watching that the Veterans Stand Down is this Thursday from nine AM to two PM at Forty-Five High Street.
Anybody else? Alderman Melizzi Golia?
I would just remind everyone that the Sunday, October first, is Memorial Sunday for the firefighters, and it's at ten AM. I believe everyone received an invitation. If you haven't responded and you're planning on attending, if you could respond, thank you.
Alderman Shoneman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say thanks to the folks at the airport who hosted Wheels and Wings. They had more attendees than they've ever had in the past, about forty-three hundred people. It was a great success. Last time we were here, we announced that we're going to be having it, and now these are the results, and we're looking forward to doing it again next year. Thanks.
Alderman LeBron?
Thank you, Mr. President. On October fourteenth, there's a legislative softball game at Anheuser-Busch to benefit the Liberty House in Manchester.
Alderman Cookson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to take the opportunity to thank many members of the Board of Education and members of the Board of Aldermen for coming out to the Daniel Webster College to take a tour of the facility and take a look at the opportunities, the opportunity that may have, may have been. I appreciate you taking the time out of your day to come visit and take a tour of the set campus. Also, my condolences to the Price family. Dorothea Price passed away. They had viewing hours this evening, and the mass will be held, the funeral mass will be held tomorrow up in Manchester, followed by a funeral down here in Nashua.
Alderman Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to inform the board that I'm resigning from the Board of Aldermen effective the twenty-ninth of September. I am embarking on a wonderful chapter in my life, and I will no longer be living in Nashua. I live here now, however. For those who have spent the time stalking me, I live in Nashua. I've appreciated working with all of you and all of my previous cohorts, I mean colleagues, the, from, back from two thousand two until today, it's, I spent four years on the Board of Public Works. I enjoyed that immensely. I still enjoy Public Works. I think it's, it's what makes our city tick, and it's been a pleasure and honor to serve the taxpayers of Nashua. Now, as I leave, leave the city, my hope is that I've made a small impact on the lives of residents. I've seen many changes in Nashua over the years and enjoyed the forty-plus years I've lived here. I wish the citizens the very best, the city a prosperous future, and I wish the mayor well. But I really have to comment on the fact that I have seen politics in this city deteriorate to a level that's just, it makes you wonder why people want to do this. It really does. It's kind of sad in a way. We can all have our differences, but when it becomes personal, that's like over the top. But I've enjoyed it. I've enjoyed working with, with everyone. We've done a lot of different things. I've served with, I think, me and Brian are the last two longest-serving Aldermen here. So you're still on top of the heap, Brian, so. It's like, I just wanted to say thank, I want to thank everyone. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman Wilshire?
Wow. Alderman Dean, I can say that your tenure on this board has not made a small impact at all. It has made a significant impact, so thank you for that. And wish you well. Whatever your new adventures are, I wish you very well. I also want to give a shout-out to the Nashville Police Department for their Cops for Kids donation to a young man here in Nashua that had cancer, and they presented him and his family with a five-thousand-dollar check the other day, which I think is pretty awesome. So, thanks to the Nashville Police Department and their Cops for Kids with Cancer efforts.
Alderman Clemmons?
Alderman Dean, I wanted to just say I wish you well in your future endeavors, and even though you and I have had our differences, we've also had our agreements. And it's been a pleasure to, to serve with you these past years. I've learned a lot from you, and, you know, I was hoping that we could ride this out together, till the end, till January, but you will be missed, and the city will miss you. And thank you for all your contributions that you've given this city, because they mean a lot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I speak for everyone else, too. I'd like to thank my colleague, Alderman Dean. It's been a real educational experience and a pleasure working with you and an honor. And I think the city is, is much better for your presence here on the board, and your presence will be sorely missed. So I wish you good luck. I know going forward, you'll have nothing but good things. Thank you.
Thanks. Alderman Karen?
So Alderman Dean, aren't you glad I got you to join the Board of Public Works?
Yes.
Because you have done wonderful things for the city, and I know that all the things that you've done for the youth over the last thirty years has been well-appreciated. I know I have, because you've worked side-by-side with me on a lot of projects, and I am surprised at this, but I wish you all the best, always. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Shoneman?
Alderman Dean, thank you very much for everything you've shown me here. This has been quite a four years for me, and a lot of it has been watching you. I learn, I try to learn, and try to be better, and I've learned a tremendous amount from you. I want to thank you very much for the inspiration that you were to get me to run in the first place and for the things you've shown me along the way. Thank you very, very much.
Alderman Moriarty?
I'd like to wish you the very best, and had a, had a good alliance and the good days together. I appreciate that time. And mostly, on behalf of my son Owen, I'd like to thank you for inspiring the David Dean Skate Park. Well done.
Alderman Dean, I met you when my son was nine. In a month or so, he'll be thirty-four.
How old was David?
That I don't know. You were giving to the community then, long before you got involved in politics, and you have been ever since, and your impact has been anything but small. I want to wish you the best in your future endeavors, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Committee announcements? Alderman Dowd?
Yes, Thursday, we're going to have a very short meeting of the Construction and Joint Special at its normal location, Nashua High North. We do have one bill left to approve, which we have to approve by committee, and there may be a discussion, if the Board of Ed so wishes, to expand upon what their current thinking is on Elm Street and Mount Pleasant. I haven't got a commitment that they would, so it could be a very, very short meeting, but it's one that we have to have.
Alderman Cookson?
Thank you. We have infrastructure tomorrow evening in these chambers beginning at seven PM. That will be Wednesday, September twenty-seventh.
Alderman Clemmons?
I actually have a question through you to Alderman Wilshire, and to the mayor, and actually to yourself. I know that the ordinance that we passed this evening was time-sensitive, and I, the Personnel Committee is meeting, or scheduled to meet, on October second, which is next week. My question to you is, reading the ordinance here, this committee, I guess, should be formed, hopefully, looks like the intention was before November first. So my question is, was, is that enough time to get these appointments to the committee, or should we consider moving that, that meeting to a later date? Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I just...
That's a good question. I, I know that there was some discussion about maybe offering...
Well, no, I guess...
I'll, I'll take that. They would have to come here first, anyway, so.
Right.
So you know what? We will, we will tentatively move the Personnel Meeting for Monday, the second. I'll have Sue communicate with the committee when another date will work for us, and we'll get a consensus on that. So I'm going to cancel the meeting for the second, knowing that this is time-sensitive, and we, but we need time to, to get these appointments out there.
Alderman Malizzi Golia.
PEDC next Tuesday, seven PM in the chamber.
Any further announcements? Alderman Dean?
Move to adjourn?
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at nine o'clock.